Testing. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Workshop this third day of May 2022. This is a joint workshop between the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale and its Budget Advisory Board. I want to thank everyone for being here today, and I would ask the clerk, if you could please call the role with regard to the City Commission.
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Vice Mayor Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trent Hales.
Here. And Mr. Donaldson, this chair of the Budget Advisory Board, would you take attendance of your board today?
Sure. Vice Chair Jeff Lowe.
Here.
District One Ross Camerata.
Here.
District One Christopher Williams.
Here.
District Two Michael Marshall.
District Two William Brown.
President.
And District Four Prabhu Ling Patel.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. So this morning, we're here to begin the series of discussions with regard to the the next fiscal year budget. And I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Donaldson, to make a presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's been actually eight months since the BAB sat in front of you. We moved this year our first preliminary meeting from March until now in May because it falls better into when we start our develop, I mean, our departmental reviews, which start next Wednesday for the next three weeks. We will review three departments in the evening, and we will be going through their actual wish list of where they see their budget coming out. We met with each of the departments in March and had a preliminary conversations with them. So today's meeting is really to give us as a group of BAB team feedback, and it's for me to give you where we are in the process. I don't think that the meeting will be a lengthy meeting today. I know that you have a full docket the rest of the day, but it's really to to give you an idea as to where where we have come over the last eight months of developing this 2023 budget, to have you ask us any questions and to give us recommendations or feedback.
You met with all the department heads?
We have met with them in March to go over sort of their what keeps them up at night type of thing and to go over some preliminary ideas. We get into the real, and that was reviewing their their business plan.
Okay.
And over the next three Wednesdays, we will go in depth with each of those departments and really talk about their their items that they're looking to put in addition to the current budget.
Okay.
So I have some highlights of those, but I just really, so that just sort of sets the tone.
Is there a video?
What's today is.
Is there a video?
Nope, it's just.
Do you have people?
It's me doing a song and dance.
Okay. Put on your tap shoes.
But I have I have my team behind me, and I just wanted to point out, we have our newest member, it says first meeting, which is Bill Brown from District Two. We currently don't have any BAB meetings or BAB members assigned from District Three, and we have one opening in District Four. So so that's why we only have.
Commissioner, we need some representatives. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner McKenzie has has filled me in on on issues without he having a BAB member, so I appreciate that.
Okay, great.
Okay. So just to give you a lay of the land, when looking at what we have done through the past since last October, when we started looking at the 2023, we acknowledge that we did not have, and we currently in 2022 do not have a a contract, signed contract, with the fire department. So the International Association of Firefighters, for the current fiscal year of 2022, that expired at the end of September of last year. So we don't know what that, when that gets finalized, what that may or may not do to the 2022 budget. And we will have to look at that, and City Manager and team will have to adjust the current budget accordingly. In addition to that, we have all of the other unions up for contract negotiations for the 2023. So we are currently looking at the 2023 budget, and our recommendation, which we have to give you in June, when you have to set your ADV alarm in July, may or may not have those contracts in real numbers. So we may be having to do some projection, we're doing projections, but if those, and so we've been using historical data. So for example, just to give you a a concept, the budget currently in 2022 was a $900 million budget, is a round number. The general fund, which is 400 million, is where we fund all of our all of our personnel. And of that, 63% of your $400 million general fund goes into personnel costs, which is wages and benefits. 87% of the 63% of the general fund is driven by contractual obligations.
So what percent, since you're so adept at percentages here, what percent of?
I can give you numbers if you don't want percentages.
What percent of the of the general fund budget goes to public safety, fire, police? Do you have that number?
Yes. I have that off the top of my head. The fire and safety as a combined is 61%.
So 61% of our general fund goes for protecting the citizens.
Citizens of Fort Lauderdale.
That doesn't include code enforcement or anything like that, strictly in fire?
Right.
Okay.
And those are, and and then when we think about general fund, you know, because when most people don't realize how complex the budget really is of the city. And so when we really think about it, and we throw out numbers like it's a $900 million budget, so something of only 2 million sounds like minutia. But when we really look at the whole discussion about ADV alarm, ADV alarm, the property taxes citizens pay to the city is only 172 million of the 900 million. So when you look at it that way, the ADV alarm and how we've kept it flat for the past, you know, 16 years, the change of the ADV alarm doesn't make a big impact on, but we have, we're now at the, I was looking at, you know, historical and how many people that we had with the city, and then how it dipped. And when we, you know, went through the sort of the market crash and the tax revenue wasn't there, and then going back up, we're back up to where we were in 2007 in number of employees. But the cost has gone up because obviously there's.
Wages, salaries, benefits.
Et cetera.
So when will we know from the property appraiser approximately what the.
That'll be in June.
That's going to be in June.
So.
And we set the ADV alarm in July, correct?
Right. So we'll be, the the City Manager in June, prior to our joint meeting, will be coming to BAB and be having his preliminary recommendation. And that is after we've reviewed with the departments, et cetera, and where he thinks it's going to be. We'll have a preliminary number from the property appraiser, but we won't have the firm number until closer to that meeting.
Right.
Because then you will have to set what the max is.
Right.
So what I wanted by sharing these sort of general statistics with you was that we know that based upon history, so last year, with the with the highest increase that we've had in a number of years of of 7% is what the property appraiser gave us in a, in where the value of the city went. And of that, 1.1 billion was new construction. So if you took that out, it was really about a 4.2%. So we had a 7%. What did that give us? That gave us about $9 million more in revenue, just from that that change. But our personnel costs went up 11 million. So when you think about that, and if that has been the trend, then by keeping the ADV alarm flat, if my revenues or our revenues for the city are coming in even with increasing in values at less than what our personnel increases are, then something else is going down. So we're balancing the budget by taking something from somewhere else in general fund. And so the question is, really, when we're going through these departmentals, the last couple of years, we've been hearing we're going to do strategic reductions, we're going to be flat, et cetera. And some of the departments that they've been coming to us and sharing with them the needs or what keeps them up at night, some of the departments have not been expanded or funded over the course of time, over the last few years, because of the fact that we've always had in the back of our mind, well, you know, we're not going to be open to an ADV alarm increase. And I'm not asking you to commit to that today. What I'm saying is, is that some of the departments have not necessarily been given what what I as just one person, but I have a team behind me, that when we're listening to these over the next couple of months, I'd like to think that we who are representing you as as advisors, and no, we don't set policy, but if we're thinking about it from a taxpayers' perspective, and some of the departments have have expressed they have needs, IT, et cetera. Police Department has not had additional people over the last few years. There have been flattened FTEs. As you know, the last fall, you challenged the City Manager to add additional people to fire.
16, I believe.
Yes. And and so those, when you put those into the 2023 budget, and I'm looking at the 2022 budget, the 2022 budget was not fully funded for those 16 because of the fact that they've been hired in, et cetera. So just looking at it without knowing yet where our numbers are going to come in from the from the county, so it's premature and looking at where our revenues are going to be. But just looking at apples to apples the last year, and if we put in a projection of 7%, which is what we had last year, the county the previous year was 5.4, the previous year were 7, then I'm looking at possibly recommending if we go flat, that you, that we're reducing services in other departments.
Well, but the thing is, there's more to that story.
Yeah.
For example, on tonight's agenda, we're being asked to approve over a million dollars worth of overtime for the fire department, even though.
Over budget.
Over budget, correct. Even though we now have at our doorstep 16 new cadet, 16 new candidates who will hopefully start, you know, working for us, and hopefully that will, you know, it, so the payroll, the payroll to pay them should come out of the overtime. In other words, there should be a little bit of a wash there, whereas we start to pay these these new candidates, and they now become firefighters, that we should be reducing the amount of overtime. And so so it's not always, it's not just more and more and more. There should be some efficiencies that we're going to be able to achieve.
And that is one thing that I know the City Manager and we have been challenging is that historically, that necessarily has not been the case, that there have been additional, but there was COVID, et cetera. But we do have in the 2023 some federal dollars. I believe it's. I believe it's about 16 million is what we're anticipating. Is that correct? 16 and 19 million. So that's going to help us in 2023.
Well, 16 and it's 19. I mean, that's.
Right.
Happy to take the difference, you know.
Right. Exactly. So what I'm, what I'm hoping today is that we think about some of the other departments and giving us some feedback. So for example, in health insurance, in 2018, the budget had in for every one of our FTEs, 9,282, so $9,300 we were putting into for our self-insurance fund for every FTE. And in 2023, we're projecting that to be $14,000 a person. So we've had a 33% increase in insurance costs. We're having COLA increases, et cetera. And it's all going in that and pressuring general fund. And we haven't had really any additional funding coming in, so.
Except for the increase in the appreciation of the value.
Which has been less than the cost of our employee and benefits.
Well, we don't know that yet because Marty Keer was here just a few months ago telling us, you know, expect a banner year again.
Absolutely. I'm just saying historically.
Yeah.
So it's premature to make that decision.
Make us nervous.
No, I, I'm trying to share with you what departments, if, if it isn't, if it is a challenging, I need some feedback as to which departments do you feel that we should be looking at, at possible reductions? Or which departments do you feel as if we should be looking for enhancements?
Okay.
Over the current?
Okay.
So those, that's really the purpose today because it is premature.
Yeah.
And I'm saying that. So, but when we meet the next time, it's going to be the day, you know, the week before you're setting the ADV alarm. So over the next few weeks, and then the other thing is, is nonprofit? Is that a number that some of the, some of those organizations, I know that have had a historical history with the city. So when we're looking at trying to balance a budget, it would really be nice to know whether or not, you know, if there's a decision between recommending additional staff or nonprofit, what is the consensus of, of the dais? Are there maybe some organizations that we as a cities, for example, our support of Riverwalk, our support of, of events, the Winterfest, et cetera? I would hope that you as a governing body would communicate that back to the city manager. So we knew upfront.
Can I ask you to stop naming names?
Yeah.
Because for every name that you name, we're going to get 10 phone calls.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be, you know, using some type of an example.
I understand.
If there's something that benefits.
Now Riverwalk's going to call me and Winterfest's going to call us each individually.
I apologize for that, but I'm just trying to give an ideas to, if there are organizations.
He didn't mean that.
No, I'm just saying, you know, it doesn't need to be all or nothing, is what my point is.
Okay.
Okay? So I wanted to see if anybody had.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Donaldson?
At this point?
It's just a, obviously a 30,000 foot impression of what we're looking at.
Yeah. Which departments do you, have you heard that you would want us as your representatives to be challenging in and zeroing in on over the next six weeks before we meet back with you? And, and, and have a recommendation as to yes or no?
Well, I think obviously public safety is this, is this commission's primary objective. I mean, every government, that's the main, that's the main purpose of government, is to protect the citizens. So clearly that's always going to be a priority. Yet, the question is, how much do we need in order to protect our people and at what cost? So, so we want your advice on what that would be as you sort of dig into the details of that. After that, of course, obviously there are other services that we do, code enforcement, you know, you know, neighborhood improvement projects, roads, sidewalks, all of that stuff, so.
And we have a, a five-year CIP plan that is, that has already been out there and published. And at some point, you know, depending on where the number comes in from the county, if it looks like that we have a banner year, which I think we all think we had, I know that all of us that are in the real estate industry could say that we all had our banner year and we think that that is going to translate, then maybe that might be the year after taking care of our public safety and other issues, then maybe we should be looking at possibly enhancing some of our CIP programs and moving up some of those items if that was your, your desire.
Okay.
So Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thanks Brian and thank you all for, for your work. I really appreciate it. Chris, the, you know, one of the unknowns obviously is that, as Brian mentioned, the contracts. And how, can you give us a sense of, you know, timing, when that might?
Yeah, I would like to have had them done by now.
Yep.
But obviously we're still negotiating with IFF. I won't refer to the, to the content of our update to you at the last meeting, but I'll just refer back to the last meeting that that gave you an idea as to where we are in the negotiating process. I believe with the Teamsters and, and FOP, we're in a process of calling for that negotiation to begin. So we certainly would like the contracts to be in place at the time that they expire. We don't have that luxury with IFF. And I can't promise that we'll bring a budget that has an adopted contract and no numbers in it when we bring it. We can, obviously based on history and based on averages and ranges, we can project really well. And I think we can project with some sufficiency that our budget office is comfortable that it's able to withstand the scrutiny of both your review and the review of the city auditor's office. So that's what I can tell you on that. We're, we're not, not for lack of trying, but we're still just a couple of sticking points that haven't gotten us to a finish line.
Okay. All right, great. Brian, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, we're, well, we're aware of it.
Not much of a choice right now.
They're, it's sort of like, but we, you know, our, our team, we, we work with the budget office and make sure that we're trying to think of what ifs. And, and I feel comfortable that the numbers that they've put out there, based upon historical data and, and looking at where the, the contractual increases have been in the past, we put that in. So I feel comfortable that we're doing the best that we can with the projections. But if the negotiations go different, like they did two years ago in one of the contracts, then we may be facing a three or $4 million per contract issue. And that'll be the challenge of the city manager to help rebalance the budget accordingly. But we're doing the best we can.
Great. And what's been your interaction with our new city auditor?
I just said hello and shook his hand.
Fantastic. So that's a start. Very good. Uh, he's very nice.
We haven't had a meeting, BAB has not had a meeting since he's been in place.
Okay. And so that was going to be my next question is, it seems like that'd be helpful at some point, whenever appropriate, for you guys to spend time with him. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks Mayor, that's it.
Commissioner Maritas, you have any questions?
Sure. Thank you all for the work you've done. I appreciate it. Like the mayor said, you know, I believe police and fire, those are, those are my priorities too. Just making sure all of our positions are funded and we do wrap up those contracts. Obviously they impact the budget. Road sidewalk CIP, I think that's next. Those are obviously my priorities over funding our nonprofits and the people to manage those projects. You know, I've had great interactions with our city staff who have really implemented our projects, whether they're the road sidewalks or CIP. I haven't heard necessarily a lot of feedback from them that we need more people in those departments, but maybe they don't come to me and they come to you. So just making sure those projects happen, they're funded, and we have the people to manage them. If anything, I get great compliments from, from our staff in, in those different departments. I know we have a lot of water sewer projects, but those are different, those are, those are bonds. So we're working on those. Then we have our Five Ash, that's obviously a different funding source. Stormwater, that's the assessment. And then we have the fire assessment that we're working on. I think we may need to talk about that. Is it still 311?
The fire assessment is up for discussion this year. And BAB will be weighing in and giving you our recommendation at our next joint meeting in June. And so the, in the past, we had felt that we needed to go at a one-time versus flooding in. You know, I, I can't speak on behalf of the BAB until we bring that up in discussion as to where we will weigh in. But of that number, then, you know, it's, 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 it's the second largest funding within general fund. So we have our ADV alarm tax, which comes in about 172 million. And then we bring in about 48 million on, on that number.
The fire assessment.
On the fire assessment. So it is a big funding mechanism of our general fund. It's the second largest stream of revenue.
Okay. So I know we'll look at that also. You know, I think another priority, we had talked about it a few weeks ago, and I, I have heard some neighbors complaining and it concerns me greatly, is 911. You know, we don't want to have, wait too long for that. I mean, what are the solutions? I know I was with Vice Mayor Fisher at Coal Ridge, actually we were speaking on Thursday night. And he said they're really on top of it, they're looking at it, they are trying to make changes. While we as a city may be looking at, I know Chris was going to look at the possibility of how much it, you know, might cost if we took over 911 and had our own internal system or maybe partnered with other cities. So I think that's still a possible conversation. I think we need to have it and, and not, not take our time on it. Hopefully the county comes up with some solutions and, and they can really beef up their program. It seemed like the sheriff said, we just need more money so we can pay our people better. You know, Lamar Fisher said, we'll give you the money, just please, you know, make this happen. So I don't know where we are, but I think we have to move along currently.
So years ago, we, let's say years ago, back in 2015, 2016 timeframe, we did a evaluation or a study as to what it would take to take over the 911 center then. 2022, a lot has changed. So the first thing I've asked for us to do is to re, not, not to redo, but to update that study to today's current terms. So at least we're having a conversation around something that's current and not something that has six or seven years of age on it. I think that's probably one of the larger discussions we'll have during this budget, budget process in light of some of the local narrative and issues that we're seeing play out surrounding the Broward 911 center.
And then I'd probably like to know from our police and fire department, would it be better if we had our own system? I mean, yes, it might cost more money, but would it be better? Would it help them? So I'd, I'd probably.
They're always going to tell you yes.
We charged you with coming up, we asked you to come up with some report to us with regard to cost and efficiencies.
Correct. And so that's what we've started to move forward with now is rather than start from scratch, just take the work we did in 2016 and, and right-size it for 2022.
Okay. So we'll talk about that. So those are my priorities above. I mean, I really wasn't in favor of $2 million to nonprofits when I had some projects in District One that I've been trying to get funded for four years. So I, I think we really need to fund our, our projects for our neighbors, neighborhoods, our roads, our sidewalks, before we really fund the nonprofits. If there's money left over, we can certainly help them.
All right, great. Commissioner McKenzie, you have any thoughts?
To, to Brian, but you, you were saying something, Chris, about they would always say yes to.
Oh, I was just saying.
Can you finish that statement? Whatever you were going to say.
Well, I was sort of done with that statement. I was saying, you know, we, we have a tendency to think that, that when we, I guess it maybe it's a little bit selfish, but we always like to think that we're the best at performing what we're the best at performing. And so do I too think that, that we could provide a better service or at least as comparable of a service? Absolutely. But that's, that's the nature of us, I, I, I think, liking to own our own destiny. So that was the purpose of the, of, of the comment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you Mayor. I also want to echo some of the thoughts from Commissioner Maritas, especially with regards to infrastructure issues. Again, roads, sidewalks, but you had mentioned some of the CIP projects. I know that we had some success in moving some of them up a few years earlier, especially in District Two. And I'd like to see even more moved up. So a lot of the public works projects. And by the way, thank you Brian, thank you to the board for all the work that you do. It's really valuable and I, I'm very appreciative, as I know all of my colleagues are, so thank you. But I agree with those. I will disagree with her a little bit on the nonprofits. I think that there is a value there in helping if we can. And many of them have taken a substantial hit over the last few years. So again, I would like to see us do what we can for those. Not sure exactly about the process of how we get there. But I, I, I still want to keep that on our radar. But again, mostly I would love to see us dig in a little bit deeper on some of those CIP projects and see what we can push up. To tell neighborhoods that, oh yeah, we think we'll get to this drainage or that stormwater issue in, you know, 2029. It's not so reassuring sometimes. You get a sort of a look when you say that. So I, I would just love to be able to push that timetable. That's it for me, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, great. So, so you heard it from us?
Mm-hmm. And so as a, as a follow-up to what Commissioner Glassman just said, some of those projects would be funded through our stormwater enhancement funds, through our water and sewer. And this was the last subject that I had on my, my agenda, is that we will be looking at, our future meetings, the fact that after the discussion of where we think that if we can make the budget work with the current ADV alarm, which we're hoping will happen based upon what we think is a record increase in values. So that'll help a lot, along with the funding from the federal government, which is a one-time. So we don't want to build into the budget items funded for that. And then we all sit here with an empty pocketbook and 24. So we'll be looking at how some of those, those funds are allocated so that they're not a reoccurring cost. But we're going to be needing to look at, after then the fire assessment fee, we are going to start having to look at the water sewer fund. So we'll be working with STANTAC. And this board is very interested in how the number that has come out, that we may be looking at an annual payment to IDE of about $60 million a year, which is our builder operator, as to how that affects the, the costs. And making sure that as we took a position before, that it's not a spike on the year that it opens and be coming back with a recommendation as to how we can even out that increase. Because we do know it's going to be an increase, but have it slope so that the citizens of Fort Lauderdale and the other cities that we, that we service are not looking at a spike in '27 or '26 when the plant opens. Yes?
Yeah, if we're looking at water and our water bills, you know, I think it was about two years ago that we took away the cap on sewer on our yards and for, for our water bill. And that really elevated the water bills, especially in my neighborhoods like Coal Ridge where they have yards, large lawns. So, so what happens is, I think it used to be 10,000. So the cap was you wouldn't pay sewer on usage over 10,000 gallons. Okay? Because we just assumed that if you were using over 10,000 gallons, it was for irrigation outside. You weren't using that all inside your house. The average house is about 5,000. So we had that cap in place for the utilities. And I don't know if this is even, this probably isn't even the place to have those conversations, but I want you to remember this when I'm gone, to bring back the cap is what I'm trying to say. Because it's really going to drive up those, if our water bills continue to go up, it's really going to kill those homes that don't have the separate irrigation line and they can't adequately calculate how much sewer they're using. So we really need that 10,000 gallon cap back when we look at our water sewer billing practices. That was, I, I tried to express my concerns about that a couple of years ago. I don't, I don't think I, I didn't win that, but that's, that's going to, like I said, really lead to concerns and, and high water bills.
And, and, you know, with, with commission's direction down the road as we look into that, I think that looking and helping to delve into that, and maybe there's also, you know, I've been sort of myself looking at, should I do an irrigation? Should I not, et cetera? You know, maybe as you have a, you know, we have a rebate program for toilets, et cetera. Maybe in, when we're looking at this new rate structure and everything. And if, to your point, if people that have large lawns with the new rate to help pay for the, obviously the new water treatment plant, maybe we should be, when we open that box up and look at those rates, maybe we should be looking at somehow assessing homeowners to get more people onto separate meters if, if that's the big issue. So I think there will be a lot of things that we need to be, be looking at when we start to project that out. And I think that would be a more beneficial use of this board's time in water sewer than our conversations on nonprofits, is my personal opinion.
Yeah, well, just remember that one small change really impacts our homes because they're not using sewer for that.
Right.
Right? They're just not using it. There's no way they're using 10,000.
And, and a lot of people have to make that decision as to whether or not, how many years of a payback of the initial cost of putting in that additional meter. And if they think they're going to be there less than three years or four years, it varies by house. So I think as a city, anything that we can do to conserve the water. So I think as a city, anything that we can do to conserve the water, and we are going to need to relook at our rate structure and how we do that. But that's something down the road that isn't necessarily over the next couple of months that we're looking at.
Mayor, can I add another point?
Are you finished? Are you finishing?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the nonprofits, so I'd, I'd like us to continue considering nonprofits and supporting nonprofits. And I think our process has to be better this year than, I just feel like it just took so much of y'all's time. And so I'm just trying to, and I don't have the answer here, Chris, what that is, but just in terms of efficiency of time and process, I just like us, and maybe you've already started thinking about this, Chris, or Brian, maybe you have. I don't know, but there's got to be a better way if we choose to fund nonprofits just to do it, I don't know, just more efficiently or effectively.
Yes, we have started to think about it. So here's the balance, that what, the process we went through last year was intended to put some sort of criteria to who was recommended versus who wasn't. Where in prior years, it, and I'm going to use this term and I want it to be taken in the context in which I use it. It was almost like, who's the favorite nonprofits? Because the favorites got funded and then others didn't. And so what Brian and his group did was to put a all-call out there basically and say, if you're a nonprofit and you seek funding, submit your application to us. We'll review it, we'll compare it against some criteria, and we'll try to advance the mission of the city, the vision and the values that the commission sets. We'll move those forward through the nonprofit funding recommendation that we make. I think, and I'm going to put words in their mouth, I think they did that and then were a little bit taken aback when other things that they didn't necessarily recommend, and to their point, for their own good reasons, ended up funding. And so I think I'm saying what everybody would want to say if they were at a mic. So we've got to strike that balance somehow. So we don't charge the budget advisory board with a process, get their feedback, but then alter it. That doesn't, that didn't work well for them. But I agree with you as well that is, the amount of hours that they spent on 2 million of $900 million in the budget was probably disproportionately big.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't have an answer. I just want to frame that, that's what the balance is.
Yeah, I mean, and like it's been shared by the commissioners and mayors, the, you know, the infrastructure, the sidewalks, roads, CIP project, I mean, that's very important. So I feel like that should be a little bit of a bigger, bigger focus in terms of their time and just making sure we're not, we're being as efficient with their time as possible. So I don't know, Brian, and just-
Until we get some real revenue numbers and until we get, hopefully, we'll have some type of a, some of the contracts signed.
Right.
So that we have some, some, something that's a little more concrete and when we're looking at the numbers. My only suggestion would be is that perhaps Chris can meet with all of you and identify organizations that are for the betterment of the city.
Yep.
I mean, and there are organizations that were on there that take the mission that all of you represent and, and put those numbers in. And those are the numbers. And then if we have discretionary, then we can get to some of the other discretionary. But I think to, you know, it tends to fall into an all or nothing, and I don't think there's an all or nothing. I think, you know, you as elected officials sitting here need to identify organizations, not to be named here by me, that we, that as a city, we need to support. And we need to put the numbers in there, just as we put in numbers for sidewalks, we put in numbers for, for light bulbs, we put in numbers, put in the numbers. And then if there's discretionary because of money from other sources or something, then that's is debatable, is whether or not we should add another part-time person in the sanitation department in the parks, for example. So, and then that would be something that you would decide based upon our recommendation. We're only an advisory board, we're not policy setting. And we do our best to try to make sure that we point out to all of you where we think the citizens deserve their dollars to go to and help prioritize them.
Great, sounds good. Thanks, Mayor, yeah.
If there's nothing further, anything further?
No.
Okay, this workshop has concluded.
Thank you.